John is supposed to make it tonight. What I would like to discuss tonight is is net planning initiatives for the 2017 town meeting. So, um.
As it relates to...
As it relates to changes in... Changes in the ZONI. Since we're a little bit late on membership right now, we're still waiting for John to show up. We want to kind of have a few more people involved in the discussion before we get going. What are you gonna do on your membership?
I'm out.
You're up in March.
This year.
This year. Because they, this real planning that needs to happen from a town, town point of view, that's...
It's keeping me in my direction and keep moving forward.
Certainly. You know, um.
Hi.
You know, I'm just... Um, you know, I think that we, that you, you need to tell people here coming up to this.
Yeah, I think so all along.
So, what, what I'm... I'm not saying, I'm not saying the chair, what I'm saying is even be a member. Even continue to be a member. That we're gonna...
Blood is good, motivated blood, I mean, of course, it's, it's not a lot of experienced blood, but...
Yeah.
So, this is a workshop between two initiatives for town meeting?
Yeah, so, I'm just encouraging. Um, okay, so John is here.
Yes, I am.
Um, have you, before we get into that, did you have a discussion with Chris?
Yes.
Okay. What I'd like John to do is to kind of give us a fill-in as to his conversation with, what's his name, Chris?
Barry.
Barry, as to the...
John, I'm looking for a good chair, do you have one?
Yeah, I'll switch with you, I have to.
No, I need that one too.
That's, thank you, look at that. As you were saying.
We were trying to meet on the Clement Road proposal and we talked about it for the last meeting. I could not make it for the last meeting due to work. I haven't talked to John, so I really don't know what's going on there.
You have, do you have a plan?
Huh?
Do you have a plan?
A plan?
A plan.
From?
Yeah, I didn't, it'd be easier if I had a plan to show you.
What I, what I want to do, okay, is just a discussion, John explains what is going on, what they discussed. Kind of leave it at that, I don't want to be asking a lot of questions, I don't want to go through a bunch of stuff because the public, you know, the buddies aren't here, the developers aren't here. But I just want to get an idea of what came out of that discussion.
Okay, so this is what, he's, he's trying to figure out a way, he, he, to do either one or no duplexes. Um, the, as you know, one of the ideas that I had was to run the road over here.
This is the built house right here, right?
This is built, that's built.
Oh, that was built as well.
That's the brick one.
Yeah, that's the brick, okay.
So, we got, the biggest problem we have is that he sold this house.
But it hasn't been copped, has it?
Right, but he's got a, he's got a contract subject to...
Tenants, yeah, tenants live in here, I know it.
Right, subject, and he's a friend of it.
Yeah.
And he's, and he's basically committed this, so it would, it would, running the road over here would kill the sale. He didn't think this guy would be very happy about running the road between them. And on top of it, he doesn't, he's not sure that he can get a, a wetland permit from the DES because he's creating an impact here when there's absolutely no impact here. So, he thinks that would be a tough sales job. So, um, one of the things that I had suggested to him was, um, the road, uh, there's an easement here for drainage and grading. I don't have a problem, and I don't think Jay Stevens would have a problem with him, is if he pushed the road further over. Typically, you know, you have a, a road that's in the center of the right-of-way, with the new road. The old, old, you know, back of the day, often roads wandered around the right-of-way. So, if you could sort of backwards. One of the things that I had suggested was to take this road and push it over here as far as possible. You know, leaving enough room for snow and dr, snow storage and drainage, but he already has this easement in addition to the road right-of-way. So, I think he can get the road probably another, you know, ten, twelve feet further. But I think the reality is the road is gonna stay here, it can go that way. So, that, I don't know if that's gonna alleviate the problem of these people seeing a road. And then the other, the other, the, the critical thing is that we have an ordinance, our open space ordinance says that if you, basically, you take the dimensional requirements of a conventional lot and you cut them in half for a, uh, open space cluster with one exception. The, the lot width, which is a very weird thing in, in, in any town. Typically, you have a lot, a lot, a front is requirement, well, you have a, a width requirement, which is measured the setback, and that's 200 feet. So, the, the problem with the subdivision is that, you know, he's gotta have 200 feet here, 200 feet there, 200 feet there, 200 feet here. Typically, if, if, if that was reduced in half, you could have, you know, fairly small rectangle lots without, then it wouldn't be nearly 200 feet wide. So, I suggested to him that if he needed to get another unit here and get rid of the duplexes, he should try to get a variance. I don't know if he'll get it, but he said he would try. I don't know what else we can, they're not willing to give up any lots. So, they need more density to make it happen. It's not waivable by the, by the planning board. I don't see any other option, I mean, we looked at, we literally looked at every option out there. He has just about the minimum required, uh, open space in here, so he can't take away anything from there.
He's just trying to maintain a certain profitable indebtedness by reducing, by reducing his duplexes. Has, the, the road already fits, he's already passed all that, right?
I didn't ask him about profitability, he's, you know, it's really, I'm assuming, yes, I'm assuming there's a, he's trying to, he has to make X number of dollars to make this thing work. But, so that's what I suggested, I, I, you know, if, if anybody else has any feedback, I'd be happy to communicate with, with the, you know, with the, uh, engineer, with the surveyor and project and, and, and give them that feedback. I just don't know what else to do.
Okay, alright.
Is that a fair update?
That's, that's a fair update, try.
Okay, and I, I told him that, you know, that, that obviously the goal was to try to get, deal with this issue here and the duplex issue. If, if, you know, if most or all of the duplexes should go away, and if we can deal with this buffer somehow, um, maybe those issues go with that.
They're, they're, the white, I'm, I'm not gonna say anything because I asked, I, I said I wasn't gonna say anything, so, okay, I'll go back afterwards.
Did you mean, you meant just Chris Barry?
I know, just Chris Barry.
Okay, alright, okay.
So, that's the update. And I haven't heard word from him since, since last...
Tuesday, Wednesday?
It was Wednesday.
Yeah, so I, I don't know where he's going with it, but that's where we left.
Okay, alright, cool, thank you. Are anticipating coming out at December maybe? Well, I, I don't know, it depends on what they try to come up with.
If he has to go to zoning, if they, if they try, if they decide they're gonna go to the zoning board to try to get that variance, then I would say no.
Yeah.
Unless it's just a courtesy, hey, we're here, we're just, we're up to, it'd be nice for them to do that, I think. Especially if there's fifteen, there's fifteen or twenty people in the audience, so just to let them know.
Yep.
But I, I, I don't know.
How long do we have to act on that?
Sixty-five days.
Sixty-five days.
Well, so here's, here's what you can do. The statute says you have sixty-five days, and it was, it's a good statute that was put in place to stop planning boards from dragging their feet for two years.
Yes.
But the reality is, he's asked for waivers, I think, I don't have the application in front of me. Uh, you could certainly say, we don't have enough information, either you give us an extension or we're gonna deny the application. I think that's reasonable in this case. And I think that they're, they're not, they're not in any hurry, they wanna, the one thing they wanna do is they wanna sell off that front lot. But they can't do it because they couldn't get a variance to create it, so, um, that's the only real urgency, and, and I, it's, it's my understanding that the person's a friend of ours. So, I, I think they're willing to wait around to get the approval. Right?
Alright. So, 2017 Planning Board Initiatives for Town Meeting. I did send a email to Jeff Passby on the mills, and I haven't heard...
The blue one?
Blue mill.
Okay.
Yeah, and I haven't heard anything back.
He did, right?
Oh, yeah, I think there's all sorts of work going on there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, well, he's well in, he's well into it. You know, it hasn't, it's all like exterior work, but he's really making, making some progress.
Didn't there mean tenants that remained the sale of the right of court?
I don't know if this under went down.
There were, I don't know if they're still there.
That was his intention originally, he said to keep them in until... Until he decided to do interior work.
And the intention is to keep it commercial for the time being?
That was the indication he gave to the zoning.
The zoning board that he said, yeah.
What did you go to the zoning board for?
A variance.
Subback issue over the solar panels. It's got a pretty good size solar already, man.
Certainly does.
What?
Now that it's in bronze.
I, I saw that, I, I saw that.
It goes ridge.
Yeah, oh, it's actually coming down to the street back there.
There's been chatter on, on different Facebook groups that I've seen, some people are very happy with it, they don't see, it acts like a fence, they don't see, you have seen some people don't like it.
Seems about right.
Can't please all the peoples all of the time.
I did have a discussion with the chief on, on, that part's not, I'm a broken, we're not gonna go there. The other one was on plan, uh, last year he had talked about agritourism. And do we want to regulate, do we want to define? And this year, he wasn't as keen as to doing it. I think, I think the concern was, was, was Wishmaker or Staples. They had the haunted house there a lot a couple of years ago. And I think there was a fair amount of traffic in that area that was causing, you know, some hidden discontent on Route Four, so...
Okay. Did they not ever police it like they do at the farmer's market at my one?
Well, that's, yeah, I don't know, I, I, I don't...
I know they stopped trying to do this and pushed back on the neighbors.
Oh, and all of that's property, so, okay.
They decided not to do it.
They never came to us this year.
Yeah.
For anything, so...
Okay, do they, would they have to come before?
They came before us with a, um, I think, I don't know, with a license or a, um...
Okay, we're trying to permit it?
Bill, yeah, I think it's special, yeah.
Okay.
Like the, um, uh, farmers markets, folks coming to the farmers market and all sort of alcohol, they come to ask, you know.
So, so, so it is regulated in a way by having, by them coming before you guys?
I'm not sure if it's us or if it's the state though.
Okay.
And they may have just come to us as a courtesy, which might, might, one of my first, might have been my first year on, so... They didn't come last year, they didn't come this year, so I had two, three years.
Okay, well, if it's...
Was this the fire chief you're talking to?
Uh, police chief, I'll call this one. But if it's not a problem now, I don't see the purpose of regulating something that's not...
I hear you, there are a number of other locales in town that, um, I could see agritourism spring up around. I don't know if we necessarily, we don't need to respond to a problem that hasn't happened yet.
Yeah, that's it, yeah.
It would now take more than a year to address an issue that became a habit, right?
Right, right, right.
Just gonna wait for next...
What, what do you think?
Well, I just know there's a number of farms in town, they could, I don't know, they want to start hosting weddings or, I mean, there, a number of things, other, um, I don't know, they had that issue with it, Canterbury, what town, say Hennecker or something? There's a farm, which has been monitoring everything for a while.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, yeah, we wanted to host weddings or something, and the neighbors were all up in arms and... City haunted, you know, destination haunted, and you see haunted overload, and, you know, these happen a lot, there's an apple picking place, I think, out in Wheatie.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Cars are just...
Yeah, there's a lot of cars.
So, long. I can't imagine that happening on Sligo Road, only because I know the landlady, but, you never know, I mean, I don't think she'd be too keen on that.
Yeah, I don't think she would either. There was a lot of noise this year on accessory dwelling units in the paper, at least.
New State Farm.
Are we all...
Are we complying to that?
I don't think so, are we? No.
Why aren't we?
So, we have restrictions, I don't, I think with the law...
Well, so you have to allow them in any unit?
Yeah, I, I wasn't pleased when I saw that.
In any unit?
Any unit, yeah.
Yep.
And the idea is it's supposed to be with work for a house. But there's minimum requirements for size and... I'm not saying I agree with that, I'm just thinking that was what I was paying for.
I don't have your terms, I know, but I, I don't, you, you don't allow it in every unit, so...
Right, yeah, I, I think it's gonna be...
I have ten.
I think it's gonna be single families.
Well, I mean, single family, I didn't mean, if you give it a apartment, you, you can have one, but yes, any single family house can now have an accessory dwelling.
I think we allow that.
Well, we have... We do, but there are still restrictions as to where they can be located, that sort of thing.
Well, our restrictions are, say, twenty eight hundred. Section eight twenty one. Okay, now that's, that's, that's the business, maybe it's after that.
Then section one?
Nope.
Accessory dwelling units, maybe Pat is right, I don't know, he is right. Page thirty-eight, as you can see.
What the...
Just here, the six ninety table of uses.
Yeah. Accessory dwelling units.
Accessory dwellings are permitted in every zone, now we gotta look at the definition of accessory dwelling. And that's one of the first definitions you have. The law goes into effect, I think, either June or July.
Yeah, accessory dwelling units, it's, I just found it.
Where is it?
It's, uh, section, it's in eight-two-one-three, fifty-two.
Yeah, the condition of, it's sort of weird, why it's, you have to, it's a permitted use under the table, under the table, but then you call it a, a conditional use permit.
So, the, the restriction of only one bedroom, not more than two people.
We can't do that?
I, I'm not sure, I, I don't know. Uh, the, the maximum, um, dwellings, accessory dwelling unit shall not exceed five hundred square feet. I don't know if that's, you know...
It might be, it might be wise, I'm pretty sure Stratford has, has kept up on the, uh, the law, it might make sense to see if they can, you know, they can...
Can get the...
Well, if, if they could, uh, if they have a model they put together just to keep a look at it, because we want it to fly.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You gonna do that, Mike, or? What I would do is I would send them that, a reference to that section of the ordinance, and then ask them to, do we comply, what do we need to change?
I'm gonna also, you don't have this in electronic, can you?
Yes, I do.
You sent it to me, so I can copy it, I'm gonna, uh, send it to the association.
Alright, okay.
We argue for it?
Yeah, please.
I'm just gonna cut that section out, I'm not gonna give them the entire doc. I'll just go, I'll just send that section.
Okay.
If you don't get, if you don't, if you don't get it by noon time tomorrow, slap the upside down.
It might be good to, to send on the table, though, because it is odd that the table says it's a permitted use, and then the ordinance says it's a conditional use, so... I, I sent them the table, Pat, and the ordinance, just to make sure there's clarity.
I'm trying to think back, was it an allowed conditional, kind of an allowed conditional use?
I don't know when...
Why did we do that? It was Mike that wrote the section, because we have, we had a, we had a section in place that really needed to be tightened up, and Mike found a much, you know, better document, I forget what from, from what time.
I don't know, it says, right here, pursuant to R S A six seventy-four colon twenty-one, the planning board hereby authorized to grant a conditional use permit. It's gotta be in the statute.
No, that's the conditional use permit statute, which is odd to have.
To allow accessory dwelling units.
But it's odd to have it, no, no, not to allow, six seventy-four twenty-one?
I'm just reading what it says in our, in our...
I think that's just the conditional use permit section, uh, you can use, issue of conditioning use permit.
For anything?
Yeah. Six, he says six eighty...
Six seventy-four twenty-one. Planning board hereby authorized to grant a conditional use permit to allow for accessory dwelling units, according to the restrictions required for the section.
The reason why we revised the...
No, it's, it's, that's just, that's the innovative land use statute, it's anything you want to do, so, so anything can be a conditional allow.
The original, the original ordinance, what it allowed was that, number one, you didn't have to live on the, on the site. It didn't have to be attached to the house. I mean, that probably was something else, there, there were two situations that came up, there was one on Rollins Road where it was a unit that went into the upstairs of a garage, and people weren't too happy with it, and then there was a situation on Founder Street where a person put in an accessory dwelling unit and it's, in a single, I think it was a single family or duplex, and, you know, it was kind of like...
Attached, you mean?
This attachment was in the building, so it was kind of a, you know, the, the main, the triplex or something like that. Uh, yeah, uh, when we started seeing that, that's when we tightened the ordinance.
My main concern is just in clarifying, because it's a, it's a permitted use, it shouldn't require any sort of conditional use permit because it's a permitted use.
That's right, well, if you look, yeah.
It's just more or less language, once again, they're cleaning up.
There's a couple of things I think it would be wise for you, the municipal association or if Stratford has someone that's, that has expertise in this, in this new statute, or this new, uh, law that's about to be passed, they should look at. Because there may be size requirements, uh, that, that we don't comply with, um, but, but you're, you're actually, you're actually right, the table and the, and the ordinance are inconsistent. It can't be a permitted use and a conditional use permit.
But don't we already have our own townwide size requirements?
But I'm not sure if it complies with the new statute, that's all I'm saying.
So, like we did last, last town meeting, we're just clarifying some definitions, variance?
But I think the very basic thing is, and I don't remember...
The why behind the...
I don't know why, well, I don't know why the table would say permitted use and, and then the, then the ordinance would say conditional use. And I don't, I don't think there's gonna be, I don't think there's gonna be a plethora of these things, so if you want to keep them as a conditional use, I, it, it, you know, it might be nice to have at least some control over them, um, rather than just if it's a permitted use.
Well, even a conditional, it says the board has to make decisions.
This, this, this was ten years ago, and I think, I'm trying to run it back through my head, and I, I think we want people to come before the board, have a public hearing and stuff before this was, somebody actually put something in like that.
Well, then I, then, then that's fine, and I, and I, and I think that's actually not a bad idea.
Yeah.
The only thing I would say, the end of the table should say conditioning use, not permitted use.
Yes. So, Mike, you're gonna just follow up with, uh, the statement? Hopefully, we'll hear something back by the next meeting, okay?
I will forward you all the information soon again, hopefully, definitely.
I hear you back through this, but I'm not sure, but I, I thought it spoke to septic loading and that sort of thing.
There was some discussion.
Yeah.
Well, I think it's just a broad statement that, you know, the septic system needs to be adequate, yeah, I forget what exactly the word is.
It's kind of a bedroom counter, um, because even making another bedroom in a house itself, I think you have to, you have to set the capacity.
Typically, the state, yeah, she, I mean, septic systems in the country are, are sized upon bedroom count. A lot of times with the septic, they'll say, if you have a three bedroom septic system, you're adding another bedroom, they'll say, they'll make it, they'll improve, but not build it. And then they, you build it to fail, so that's, that's pretty common.
Effective June first of twenty seventeen, it's R S A six seventy-four colon seventy-two.
Six seventy-four colon seventy-two?
Yeah.
Yeah, the septic system, it says, the septic system shall be adequate for both units per, you know, as far as the septic, in conclusion, controls, and so, that's the statement.
Mike, what is the R S A?
Six seventy-four colon seventy-two, it goes north at, June first of twenty seventeen, Chris. Says, a municipality that adopts a zoning ordinance pursuant to the authority granted in this chapter shall allow accessory dwelling units to be in matter of right or either a conditional use permit pursuant to R S A six seventy-four twenty-one, or by special exception for all zoning districts. And that permits single family dwellings, and that was what I'm explaining, so...
So, you're ahead of the game, we just gotta make sure it works.
But, so, so here's the, where the rub is, so, one accessory dwelling unit shall be allowed without additional requirements for lot size, frontage, space limitations, or other controls beyond what would be required for a single family dwelling without accessory dwelling unit. The municipality is not required to allow more than one accessory dwelling unit for single family dwellings, so, our different, uh, spatial requirements, that sort of thing, doesn't seem like it's jives with this new... Statute goes on some more, but I'm just that one section.
So, you could...
I'm gonna, I'll run it by the...
So, you could have an accessory dwelling unit bigger than the dwelling unit?
I didn't write the statute, Pat, so, I don't think I would have voted for it had I still been in one of those places, so, okay.
Okay, alright, um, so, so we'll, we'll chase down on that.
Yeah.
At the last meeting, we had a discussion about duplexes in suburban residential, countryside residential, those zones. Do we allow them, or don't we?
We do currently, right?
We do.
Okay.
The question is, do you want to continue?
Yeah, now...
What prompts your question?
That was something that came out from the meeting last, early in the morning. It was kind of like, it was, that was one of the issues that were brought up, but I forget who it was.
Do you like the two family dwellings, right?
Yep.
Which, which roads, the streets, is that, where's the zoning there?
See, one, see, too loud and...
The planning office is totally screwed up, so...
We used, we used to have a zoning there. It makes sense to me there.
For sure?
It makes sense to me there. I don't know. So, John, explain to me why it's okay to, why it should be okay, or it shouldn't be okay to do it in suburban or countryside residential, from, from a planning perspective?
I don't think, I don't think there's a, I don't know if there's a planning reason why you would allow or not allow, I think it's sort of a philosophical reason. Or, or decision you gotta make, and, um...
So, it really just comes down to...
I guess, I mean, I guess I can't make a compelling argument as to why you'd want to allow them, allow them here, but not in a more rural zone.
Okay.
Other than, I think people in rural areas are, uh, used to the housing stock being generally a single family detached home.
Right. It makes complete sense to me in urban residential and the old Seven Falls district, because I, I live around them.
There's a lot of multifamilies.
Right, I mean, that makes sense to me, so... As far as, are we seeing much new construction of duplexes in these areas?
Well, the, the trigger was that they wanted to duplexes in this part of the world, so...
I understand, and that, that gives them that back.
That's, that's the, that's what generated this discussion.
It's, it's a decent investment, sometimes it's an easier way for a person to buy a home is to buy a duplex.
You know, let's, let's kind of go back when we had the, what's my call, the Granite Village situation. We had gone through the ordinance to, we made a distinct call to pull multifamily out of the S R and C R zones. But we made a fairly firm decision to allow duplexes in these zones.
You did?
Yes.
In which zones again?
In the, in all zones, in all zones.
I see.
My, myself, um, you know, I, I think that if you would not allow them, you are kind of... you are kind of affecting, you know, the entire battle of workforce housing and all that. So, you know.
If you don't allow them, hell yes.
If you don't, no, no, if you don't allow them in those zones, just in general. I, I think that's.
I think the one thing that you need to do, one thing that would be helpful is to sort of take a step back and look at the town and say, if you're a young person or, or someone that doesn't, you know, either starting out or you're looking for lower cost housing options, what does Rawlinsford offer? And it, I don't think you can say, I wanna be able to buy a farm and twenty acres for a hundred and fifty grand. That's not fair. But I think that if you look at the town, there's a lot of housing options that are not expensive. Here, there's multifamily, you know, you have multifamily throughout town, either some that was predated zoning or in downtown. So I, I think you've got that covered. We allow, you know, we allow, we beat the state statute by allowing accessory dwellings in every zone already. I did hear, I know Pat, I think that you, you grumbled about getting rid of the open space ordinance.
Yes.
I don't know if I'd wanna see both go away, the duplexes and the open space ordinance. I think that may be a, almost sort of a double whammy. But if, you know, I don't, I don't, you know, there's a lot of towns, and I was the town planner for many years in Northampton. And Northampton is two acres, two hundred and fifty feet of frontage, and that's it. There's nothing else. That's not fair. You know, if you come to town and you're a school teacher or a police officer, you couldn't afford to live there. And that, and I don't think that's a reasonable thing. Allowing duplexes gives someone the, as you said, it gives you the option of buying, perhaps buying something that's more affordable. Doing a cluster lot gives you an option to buy maybe something that's more affordable. I don't think, taking them both away, I think would be a tough, a tough one for me to advocate for. But one or the other, I don't, I don't think would have a, I don't think it'd have a real bearing. 'Cause I think you have a lot of other options in town.
I can throw in my two cents. I wanna go back to, to variance here on the subdivision, close subdivision on the Northhampton Road. One of the members of the board, the Z B A, referenced, yeah, like a study of some sort. Essentially, if I wanna, sort of like a master plan, it was, I don't know what to call it, that talked about preserving the rural nature of that area. And I guess what I'm wondering a lot about is, so, you know, if the town invests whatever it did in coming up with that, does that have any bearing on future decisions? And I guess the other, I personally from, I'd like to see the absence of duplexes. Like, I'd like to have certain areas of the town that preserve its rural nature. I mean, I think that Rawlinsford is part of the attraction to Rawlinsford is, is the rural nature. So, and also, without disrespect to you, Kevin, about your point, you know, I got the impression from the, you know, doing the site walk that I think it, I think it characterized the, the engineers made a comment that his client was interested in maximizing profits. I'm not sure these would be low price duplexes. I mean, I think you can make a pretty good sized duplex on these lots and make them pretty expensive. So I'm not sure that just because they're duplexes, they're gonna be, you know, entry level housing.
But the, the argument that, you know, preserve the rural nature. You, if we use that argument, we wouldn't allow anything in town. That any development outside of the urban residential area would not occur. Okay? You know, and I'm not trying to look at, at specific projects. I think when you look at a specific project, you know, you're kind of looking at it from a very narrow focus. We need to look at the entire town. I, I think it's, it's kind of a reactive move, move. So that's just my perspective. I do have a concern about the affordability, you know, of, of housing stock.
So let me just throw the scenario off. There are a number of very large tracts of land that are currently undeveloped.
Yes.
As generations get older, they die off, younger generations come home, it's all the same value.
Correct.
They're the same. And they, they sell off that land. Happens, everything happens, here, everywhere, unless they're right. So do we want to see, as the community has been constipated to help the guys at the town, do we wanna see a couple hundred houses?
Yeah.
Duplexes. Thank you. I'm sorry. Duplexes at, over at the Edelman Farm or the Dodge Farm, I mean, probably even more over there. I mean, so that's just thinking ahead. I mean, not, I don't, it's not gonna affect this current property or should it? And that's not fair. But, I mean, do we wanna see that in the future? I think, I, I think it's pretty safe that property, those properties will be dealt eventually, right? So.
Well, but.
Maybe not in our lifetime.
Well, that's.
It will be eventually.
That's the thing. And I think, you know, one thing I'm, I'm gonna wanna discuss here pretty soon is that I have a real big concern about, we seem to be approving these like little projects. And, you know, it's starting to have an effect on town. Every, every place that, we approve some of, it's close, it's about a three day and fast.
Right.
You know? So, you know, that, that is, that.
That's what we wanna see at the division.
It seems as though this should be, be dealt with with impact fees or, you know.
You know, I mean, as a former Lars landlord, that, it's, it's not, it's not, this is not an easy issue to resolve. I mean, if you look at some of the inherited, you know, someone's preserved land for generations. All of a sudden, they die, they pass on to their kids, their kids sell it. That was their inheritance. Whether or not they got millions of dollars or hundreds of acres of land. So, so what are you gonna do? You gonna make a twenty acre zoning and deprive them of their right to do it? That's not a reasonable thing.
Right.
You could do what a lot of seacoast towns did, and that is to raise millions of dollars at town meeting. So when land come under sale, you can get by per conservationism on it, buy it and put it and preserve it. But if you look at the towns that did that, and there's a lot of them, Stratum, Exeter, Northampton, Greenland, what does it do to the cost of housing? Now, let's just say the town buys two or three or four hundred acres as they come up over the years. That takes that out of the pool. Now, everybody else's land, it just jacks the price up. I'm not saying it's not a good idea. It's just that there's, you know, everybody always holds a bulbous.
No, 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 is, is the.
Is the greatest example of planning. Because there's, you know, a tremendous amount of green space, green belts. But the problem is housing costs are through the roof because there's no land that's developable. And that's what's happening in the seacoast. So you, you need to have some sort of a balance. And my own gut reaction is that, you know, if I was gonna live next to a subdivision, and this is just, I don't even know where this is coming from. I'd rather live next to a single family home subdivision than I would a duplex subdivision. But, and, and would an accessory dwelling unit bother me next door? It might, but if the owner lives there, they're probably not gonna let the thing get out of control.
That's right.
So, but I was also the planner in Greenland, New Hampshire, and Greenland allows duplexes on any lot. If you drive through Greenland, there's a developer who's been around for years and years, Don Cook, and he keeps his guys busy. He'll buy a lot, and when his thing's slowed down, he'll buy, he'll, he'll have his guys go build a duplex on it. And they're all over town, scattered all throughout town. You can see them everywhere. And they're nice. As you said, they're not cheap. You know, I mean, I don't know what they are, three fifty, four hundred thousand dollars aside. So they're not ugly. They're not, you know, but it's different. You know, it's two houses married together. It's hard to make, you know, it's, it, they look like duplexes despite the disaster. Is that a bad thing? I don't know, you know?
But that's the way the road's going. I mean, it seems like a lot of times we're fearful of letting development happen. I, I, and I think the focus is, as we do, we control on, we work on controlling it. But yes, these subdivisions, these clusters, they're popping up. We ran before town meeting, talking about residential in the mill. I mean, that was a huge step. We did that. This stuff's gonna happen. And yes, these, these logic apostles, some grandkid from now, probably not in my lifetime. And, you know, but at the rate we're going, you know, in taxes, hello, I'm a taxpayer in town, as we all are. You know, it's quality life and rural characteristics are nice, but these things are gonna happen around us regardless. And I think that, you know, the focus on controlling as they happen, you know, this gagging thing, you know, you look at all of them that's hopped up, starting back from, I'm not that old in town, like Stockdale and that whole, and then you got Seven Circle, and you got, you know, you, Ross, I mean, you just, they go on and on. They're happening. Whether they put duplexes or single families doesn't really matter. I think that most nicer houses in town are, when the market comes back, they're, they're priced expensive. I mean, it costs a lot.
Well, we, we escaped a big bullet with the thing behind, with what's behind the waters. We really haven't had.
I think you escaped two bullets. You escaped that one, you escaped the one by Wendy's too, right?
Yeah, but I don't think that would've been as big of an impact as.
You're probably right.
Yeah, I, I'm not as concerned about Granite Village, you know, that, that situation.
Yeah.
I, I think that, that there would've been much more stress on municipal services if that condo development had gone into act there. You know, other than that, over the last at least twenty years, I mean, we're probably even go back to thirty years, there really hasn't been a lot of stuff happening in Rawlinsford as far as development goes. You know, I think the last major development would've been probably look the Woodlands, right?
Yeah. And where the, my, my mother.
Were your houses.
And then go back a little bit.
I mean, for sure. I mean, those were fields, I get it, and they were four and areas, for sure. And I would be hypocrite if I said I grew up in one of those. But I get that. But people will, will come to us and say, you know, you've got a stuff that hadn't happened, no one's even talked about it, but you gotta stop it. We need impact fees. Well, understanding if they're gonna have impact fees, which we should talk about, you've gotta have a purpose for them. Right? You're only holding for so long. I mean, so you have to have a larger plan, you know? You know, you're not gonna, you're not gonna put an impact fee on, you know, a little four, four lot subdivision.
Right.
But, you know, the problem is, let's say you get five four lot subdivisions. Yeah. Okay? Now, now you're talking, you know, you're talking twenty units. And that's, to tell you the truth, that, that's my overall concern right now that I'm having in, that, that's.
The cluster subdivision is a concept that can be, is a decent concept. I mean, I would prefer to see the type of development that's proposed on one than another, you know? Stockdale, that sort of type of development, the curb, what do they call it? Not curbside, what are they?
Just a conventional.
Conventional, conventional. Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I spent a lot of time for work going to Washington, traveled through Virginia and Maryland. And I don't know if you've ever driven through any of the suburbs of Washington, but they're all one giant strip mall and one big subdivision. I mean, you can drive from downtown DC and go to, unless you went to McLean, I bet you a million it was a little. But I mean, it, it looks like just one giant subdivision for hundreds of miles. I would prefer that we don't go that route.
Yeah.
I'm the obstructionist, I'm sorry. I'd like to preserve rural.
No, no, I, I.
It's possible. We're also not in Northampton. But, you know, I don't want to turn it to Northampton.
Well, there's something, you know, I think the town, you know, everybody should probably pat themselves on the back because the one gold mine that you have that no one wants to touch is Route Four. And I don't think there's any, I mean, there's been one person that said, hey, let's do it, let's develop it. But, you know, that's, you know, that, that's the one, if you wanna generate tax house, that's the place you do it. And I don't think there's ever, you know, in all the years I've been here, there's never been support for it. At least not that I, I can remember. So, you know, I mean, that's the busiest run you got, it's not commercially developed, that's not bad, you know? It, but it's a double edged sword. I mean, and we've talked about this before, you're looking for tax dollars, you're not gonna get them down here because it's already developed. You know, maybe the, the values might increase a little bit with the blue and mill, but it's gonna be incremental. I don't know where else you're gonna put commercial, which generally pays more taxes than residential. So, you know.
And we know those little box stores of the Midas's and those, they don't, they don't generate the kind of revenue when they're more of an ice ore.
We could've had a Dollar General.
That's why I thought they were Dollar General.
A Dollar General.
We did.
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, I'm glad I wasn't around for that.
Oh, no, no, you were around.
Route Four, I'm sure.
On Route Four, right, Route Four, right by my house.
Did that end?
That's where they wanted to put it.
Very far.
Yeah. Okay, that's what, I skipped one way. They, when I, when they said, when they asked, would you expect any opposition? And I'd say, yeah, it's gonna be fairly intense. And they just kind of went like, see ya, bye, have a nice time.
And it would've been.
Yeah, it would've, yeah. Well, plus, anyway, most of that land's all conservation easements. You know, the farm, that was the, really where they wanted to put it was on.
My Robins.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good luck with that. Yeah, good luck with that. Let me know how that works out for you. So. Yeah. Moving right on. Moving right on.
Okay, so we need to, accessory dwelling unit, what else are we gonna?
Okay.
What was our consensus on duplexes or not?
I think with two, two.
Yeah, I don't think there's really.
I think Mike and I are the same, with two, two, yeah.
I mean, this is not only meaning we're gonna have.
Right, no, it's not.
We should, you know, we should discuss it with the larger groups.
You're three, one. You're, you're anti-duplex, aren't you?
No.
Oh, you're not? Oh, okay.
And I'm fine not making those decisions.
I'm, I'm, I always like to kind of like force the tide to continue the discussion, so.
Well, even with a three, one, I don't think, I think we, we're only a couple of.
No, 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 I can't.
This is, yeah.
I can't stay with our pro or.
Yeah. This is a workshop. This is a discussion. This is planning. This is what planning boards are supposed to do.
I've never been to one of these.
Yeah, so, well. We did one last year, so, anyway.
Well, going back, can I just follow up on the impact fees? Mike, before you were on the board, we, did we have an impact fee?
We have an impact fee ordinance.
We, I, I thought, did we have Bruce Mayberry come down here? I thought we did, but maybe.
I think that might've been while I was off the board.
So we did, we, we discussed, I, I know we did. We had, there's a guy that's sort of the guru in New Hampshire, his name's Bruce Mayberry. He.
I think he came because he talked about how structured you had to take the money, record the money, you know, what the time period was.
But the other problem was we had no bonded indebtedness. So he said, you know, one of the, like, it's easy to have an impact fee ordinance when you've got a lot of debt. He said, well, you know, A, we'll pay the debt off. As long as the debt, like, let's say the school put a huge addition on in anticipation of future growth, it's okay to retroactively say, okay, you're the, you built a house, you're the anticipative rule, give us the money.
Okay.
We didn't have that problem.
Right.
And he basically said, the costs of administering this thing are gonna far outweigh, or they're not gonna, there's no, there's gonna be really no benefit. And the number was small. I wanna say it was a grand or something that he, that he said he could charge for a single family house. And he had given us the breakdown. It was, and I can't remember exactly what they were, but he said, because of the lack of growth here, especially storeable growth, it doesn't make sense. You know, where you, where, where I think a town like this could, could, could do better is, as Pat said, you know, we have these small subdivisions. It's hard to say, what is the impact of five houses here and five houses there? But one of the things you could say is, you know, and, and it's hard to quantify, but, oh, we have five acre, we have five lots over here, or six lots, whatever that thing is, six lots. The open space is predominantly wet. Those kids are gonna wanna play baseball or soccer. They have really nowhere to play out there, so, give us ten grand or give us fifteen grand. And, and the town will put it towards, you know, a recreation impact fee. Or we'll, we'll, we'll use it for an amenity that, that will benefit, you know, those kids. You have to get the developer to participate and agree to participate. But, and I, and I was pulling that number out of my hand.
I don't think it's required.
I thought it was a.
For the open space?
Yeah, for, where am I looking? I'm gonna look at what I want. Under, yeah, for certain size developments, I thought they were required to have parks and that sort of thing.
Well, but they're not, well.
But that's a subdivision, right?
Yeah, and I just, I shouldn't have said soccer. It could've been, you could've said, you know, the road needs work, we realize you don't really, you really don't meet the threshold required to, to give us two hundred thousand dollars to fix the road. But can you contribute to this fund and just give us twenty grand or fifteen, whatever it is, a reasonable number? To get you to, to extract something out of it. If they're willing to write the check, it's not an impact fee. You know, it, but, you know, you also don't wanna have, you know, you also don't want it to feel like extortion where, hey, you know, if you don't give us the, if you don't give us the money, we're not gonna be able to. But, but Pat is exactly right, that, you know, these small projects do, you know, they, they do add up and they, they have an effect on the town, an impact on the town. Oftentimes, it's not measurable until, you know, until later.
Right, right, right.
Oftentimes it's not measurable until, you know, until later, and then it's too late, so. Everybody goes, everybody got into our. Well, I don't, I don't think you can memorialize it in writing, I just think it's something that you need to look at and say, you know, is there, is there something that, you know, that the town's lacking, you know, and I don't know what it is, I don't know if we have, you know, I know like the sidewalks are deplorable in downtown, now that, a climate growth subdivision isn't going to impact the sidewalks down here, I don't think.
Okay, you've got to be gracious that someone has determined how much you should throw our way and.
Oh, I don't, I don't.
We just feel like maybe we're going to charge them seventy-five.
It can't be willing, only just can't give us a fire truck, give us a police car.
And then we just get to spend it where we want, and we just have to like that.
I think, well, I think when you're reviewing something, that you've got to identify, you know, a need and the cost of that need, and then you've got to have an applicant that's willing to pay. You know, and it has to be reasonable, and it happens all the time, it's not, it's not easy, because it's sort of a negotiating thing.
You have no structured writing, there's no guidelines above.
It happens, it happens.
I don't know, I don't know what that was.
I sit there beside the table all the time, I can't tell you how many times I've contributed to fire trucks, to parks, to this and that, you know, and, and, you know, I'm not willing to do it if there's, if there's, you know, if someone could say, hey, we really need this, or we really need that. It's sort of a costly business, and I'm not suggesting, you know, you have your hand out at every turn, but, you know, you don't have impact fees. And I don't think you're going to have impact fees anytime soon, so, you know, if there's, if there's costs of these impacts that you're not, you know, capturing, maybe that's another alternative, that's another way of doing business.
An impact fee, it doesn't have to be treated as such?
It doesn't have to be treated as such, no.
It doesn't?
But John's discussing is the, let's make a deal phase.
Extortion comes to mind, you know? I wouldn't want to get in front of that and have someone say that I charge you fifty and I charge him seventy-five.
This is, this, you know, and I'm not trying, and I'm not trying to be a jerk, but this is all extortion, you know, I mean, I can't tell you, when I'm on the other side of the table, how many times I go to a town and I, if I have twenty lot subdivisions and I'm trying to pitch, and it fully complies with the ordinance, and you know what the first thing I hear out of every planning board's mouth? It seems a little too dense, could you get rid of two units? Want to change your word if you want to get rid of two units? There's, there's two hundred thousand dollars right off the table, that's extortion, and that happens all the time. You're doing it right now with these people, they're, and I shouldn't say it, but that plan, I would say almost fully complies with the ordinance, no one likes it.
The Gaggen one?
Yeah.
And that's what I.
And what do you want to do?
You want to beat them down? So. As passes, they can do whatever they want, as they consented.
But, I mean, you know, if we could also understand kumbaya and say, let's try to figure out the best way to, the outcome might be better, it might take two years, but, you know, no one has two years, so, you know, the best way we can do it is write down the best thing we can in this thing and hope it works. So, and by and large, I think our ordinance are good and they do work.
You're not against it, but you're opposing by any means. I just wouldn't want us to be placed on the position.
It's, it's not, it's always awkward. Exactly. And again, I've never, I've never really noticed any, I really largely identified need that there were lacking something. I mean, there was, there was talk about the school, I know we've heard about sidewalks and drains downtown, but.
I could tell you about some cul-de-sans you could have been there. There are several.
My next question.
Very expensive.
And it changes a lot of impact fees, so John's talking about certain towns have raised money to keep open spaces, right? I'm assuming that Rawlinsford doesn't have a lot of money for open spaces, and which leads to my question is, can impact fees be designed to build up money for purchasing open spaces?
That's a great question.
I don't know.
We have a fund for it, yeah.
Well, you know, most, not most, a lot of towns, I don't know when it was, fifteen, twenty years ago, fifteen years ago, the state allowed the land use change tax.
That's what we do.
To be.
Banked.
Saved, banked, to be, to purchase open spaces. The problem is, you don't change a lot of land use here. So, if someone takes, say, someone takes a hundred acres in Exeter, and they put fifty houses on it, or seventy-five houses, the land use change taxes, just say it's ten a lot, there's a hundred lots, there's a million, a hundred thousand dollars? Whatever it is, whatever, and so some of these towns banked a tremendous amount, millions of dollars. I suspect if you look at your land use change tax account, you probably have nothing, but.
No, we have, we have some, but not nearly.
So, that's, that's one option, and I don't know if you dedicate a hundred percent, you know, sometimes dedicate a hundred percent, sometimes, you know, you could go from five to, you know, to zero, to one percent to a hundred percent. I don't know what Rawlinsford does, but I, again, and I don't think it's going to ever accumulate to a huge amount because there's just not a lot of development.
On the land use change, you're saying?
Yeah, but the question you ask about impact fees is interesting, I don't, I don't know, I don't know the answer to the question.
I don't, personally, I don't see why not.
I don't, I don't, yeah, I don't see why not either. The problem is, is that, let's just say, I mean, this has been a banner year for Rawlinsford, if we approve Gaggen this year, which won't happen, we would have approved, I don't know what the other Schimber project was, fifteen lots?
Yeah, something like that.
So, let's say in two years we approve twenty-one lots, if it's, you know, three, two, three grand a lot, you're not, you're not going to miss a lot of money. So, that's the downside, is even if you tagged them two grand a lot or something, what are you going to do with, what do you do with twenty-five thousand dollars?
Right, almost better than nothing, I mean.
It's better than nothing, it's just that, can you even buy a half an acre with twenty-five thousand, I don't know, you know?
Maybe you can buy the rights for future development, like Dover, Dover's farm, that's what it's.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I, you know, any, you know, anything is better than nothing, so.
All right, we'll leave this discussion for a later time, after we kind of dig into the trip a little bit further. Mike, from a select board point of view, is there anything that they see, that they'd like to see us change or like, rather?
The, for zoning, I have to have that conversation again with them, but stormwater rates.
Was that all?
The chair wants, would like to know when we're going to be able to incorporate them.
Are they subdivision rates?
Yeah, subdivision, okay.
We probably, I could have. We will plan on another. Workshop in December, and I'll have the SRPC, so if I met the SRPC people to come in.
Is it a great public hearing, or is that going to be the public hearing?
No, no, that would be the discussion, I don't know, no, that will be the discussion of us, and then we'll deal with that issue. Did you do your.
Oh, man, what did I do? I have a spreadsheet for everybody. This is a comparison sheet of five towns, including our own, their fees they charge for.
Oh, good, okay, so that's also another thing we want to talk about.
That's something else that needs changing the fees.
Yeah, for sure, yeah, that is something actually, thank you, John. We wanted to.
Curtain applications.
Mm, curtain applications, like, you know, what everybody does for everything.
Application for a public hearing.
Yeah, yeah.
They charge a public hearing? Yeah.
Well, so, no, so, in Lee, they, the public hearing, they charge ninety dollars for a public hearing, but the site interview, that subdivision, okay, that's everything, that's zoning, that's like everything that they can, that they do, it's ninety dollars flat fee.
Wow.
Yeah, there's a note online if you have the live version, but. The biggest thing that I saw, aside from a butter fee, and I, I can't really speak to like what you should charge for application fees to like cover what John, the cost for John or anything like that. The biggest thing is public notice, these towns charge nothing, and Foster's rates now are based on column width. And we're losing a lot of money with the notifications.
One of them costs two hundred and seventy-two dollars.
Yeah, so, I talked to the guy at Foster's, and these are the three most recent, the last one was for the ZDA hearing, it's on the twenty-second. The two seventy-one, and then these other two are for planning board, so one was Gaggen, no, one was RT, Jimmy Joll's thing.
Okay.
And the one before is, was the Gaggen public hearing.
I thought the Gaggen one was, I had a couple of them more.
Uh, that's, that's what.
And that's what they gave you. That's what they gave you.
So, based on that, I mean, I just, and I put like a couple of recommendations there, I mean, I just think, if we're going to give a fee, like, basically write up an invoice of fees for each applicant, we shouldn't have a set notification fee, it should be like as, you know, what, whatever we're charged. Yeah, plus, plus I think we should charge an administrative fee on top of it, I think five dollars should be added to it, because that's. Oh, yeah, or that, for my time to email.
The problem I've got with that series is that you don't want to be in the business of chasing money. And what I think you'd be better off doing is just taking the two seventy-one, one seventy-five, and ninety bucks averaging them.
Yeah, that's the other, that's the other.
The problem is, imagine someone applies and then gets denied, they're going to say, I'm not paying it, I don't know. So, you know.
Yeah, I don't know when the fees get paid, do they have to pay them?
They pay them, when they submit the application, they pay the fees, and I.
Oh, okay.
I mean, we shouldn't be in the money making business, but we shouldn't be in the loo, we shouldn't lose either, and the other thing is, if there's two public hearings under one night, I'm assuming they're going to save, because you're going to, you're going to have one notice in the paper.
Yeah.
So, I'd rather say, you know, if it were me, I would say, you know, just looking at those three numbers, say it's, you know, two fifty, two fifty for notice, that, you know, I mean, because Sarah's right, you shouldn't have to pay her to do all this work for, on behalf of somebody else, or on behalf of the applicant, so, it should be whatever the fee is, say, you know, two hundred bucks or a hundred and seventy-five bucks.
What's the average fee that they charge other communities, so to.
Uh, so, there's a notice here, so it looks like, it's about seventy-five, the two.
So, they're losing, so they're losing money also.
Yeah, Dover charges eighty, but seventy-five, Lee didn't, I, I got this off of all of their websites, and some didn't even say, so I don't even know, like, you've done, you've probably done work in some of these towns, I don't know, I mean, I'm sure they have like a better notification fees, they just aren't published anywhere. Although neither are ours online, so.
Well, notification is, is seven bucks per something, individual, right?
No, yeah, it's seven, it's seven dollars per a letter.
Does that cover our cost from your?
No, it doesn't, because each registered or each certified male is six forty-seven.
Okay, all right, so.
So.
So, if we were.
And so, my, my suggestion is, and it's a bit of a bump, but I think we should go to ten.
Okay, yeah.
I think all these towns should be charging ten.
So, the notification fee goes up, the.
What, well, okay, then what about, what about, did you, have you recorded anything, oh, we don't record anything.
No.
So, we don't even care what the recording fee is, I guess, right? Which I guess is a bit bizarre, but.
What is, now, I saw this chart, and I didn't know what it was for Elche, is that something that?
It's part of the recording fee.
Okay.
There's a fee on top of it, but we don't, we don't.
We don't charge that.
Well, we don't report plans, so, I guess it doesn't really matter.
So.
And now.
For a while, I thought Andrea was taking them to the courthouse, and was going to find them, but that.
It's been a while since we've gotten that, so, I've kind of said, look, if the developer can work it out with Andrea, as soon as I sign the document, I'm going.
You were coming in like on Thursday nights, right, and you were all going to.
Yeah, and I was, I, on Thursday nights, I come in and sign plans. Once I sign the plan, then as far as I'm concerned, I am out of the loop, all right? And it's up to Andrea and the developer to determine who is going to record that fee, to record that plan.
The problem is that, and I don't think it's, I don't think it's been a case of years ago, but years, when plays were hand drawn, people would get a planning board to sign a plan.
They were on mylar, too, weren't they?
So, they still are, they give them a mylar, they modify the mylar, they report it.
Right.
It's a little bit harder now, because most people are using laser printers, so they're not easily erasable.
Right.
But most towns want to control their signed plans, so, once they're signed, they deliver them to the registry and record them, that's the way it should be. You're bizarre in a sense that you sign plans, or you allow plans to be signed and taken off, but the problem is, you don't, you know, first, you just send a staff person to the registry, it could be a two hour, a two hour ordeal, you know, they go there, they wait in line, the plan, and then, God forbid, the way it happens all the time, the plan does, there's a flaw in the plan, we've got to bring it back. Who's going to pay for that time? You.
Right.
So, you know, I don't, I'm not sure that you need to really worry about people modifying plans anymore, but it was, it was a problem at one time. So, you know, I think it's, it's been working just to let, just to give it back to the applicants, they go record it. Although we had run into snags where, and I can't remember, but we had a subdivision that the person got approved, never recorded the thing.
That was, wasn't that, what you call it, on whole mill?
Yeah, and they, they revoked it or something, I can't, I can't remember. So, there's been some minor issues, but nothing, so, I just don't think you have, you don't, you don't have a huge staff here, so, to send someone to the registry for an hour and a half or two hours, I don't know if you want to do it.
Sir, do you have anything you want to add, or?
I just thought it'd be a good time to just start learning about the town a little bit more, and just observing and listening.
Okay, cool.
Great job on moderating this workshop.
Cool, thank you.
That was really it, so, it's very, it's very interesting, so, good job. Thank you very much. Good night.
All right, so, so what I did was, there's two notification sections, one in the extra fee section, and then one in the subdivision section. And I'm saying go to ten on those.
Yeah, so the other thing is zoning.
Okay.
Zoning.
Zoning, okay.
The zoning for hearing, zone, and maybe this is a select working, not a planning working, but zoning, the notification fee is six dollars.
Well, that's.
And seventy-five.
Who controls that fee?
I don't know. And it was, it's seventy-five for the hearing notice, there is no hearing fee, there's no application fee. And you could see, I mean, at least in the town, I was able to get information for, I mean, Barrington charges a fee for, oh, well, Barrington and Lee. Lee's a bargain, ninety dollar fee, but, you know, Barrington's a hundred and fifty, I'm sure Dover charges something.
Yeah.
But that, those, that fee schedule is not online, there's no new fee schedule on online. And I tried to follow up with Matt Berry, but their town offices apparently don't hurt them very much.
Yeah, they're all lost in us, we don't know.
It may be a world for it.
They also don't have a full time chief.
Ah. They don't?
They're all part time as a public chief.
Really?
We're a step ahead of a couple of towns. Matt is one of them. You will ask yourself what the taxes are, okay, I imagine.
Yeah. It's called the Hoister River School District. All right, so, public notice, I put in that two hundred, would that be?
These are two fifty, you think that's.
For subdivision?
Well, subdivisions are okay, it's two, it's, there's a base fee and then a per lot fee, so it's two hundred and then a hundred and fifty per lot, I think that's fine.
Two.
Yeah, that's fine, I think.
Oh, you were talking about public notice.
Public notice.
Oh, public notice.
What were you going to put up, ten, or uniform?
I think.
I was going to put them, I, the notification fees go to ten.
Yeah, ten, ten.
Then, then there's, then there is a, then there's a public notice fee.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
The last three is two seventy-one, one seventy-five.
Right, right, I thought we were saying we're going to have to make uniform.
What do you want?
Two and a half.
Two and a half, is that what you want?
Yeah.
Two and a half.
It's high, but it's, I don't.
Well, it's.
See, I think, yeah, and I think all these other towns just haven't updated it yet, because Foster's just recently changed this, this is a newer thing.
A year from now, you said that some of this notification fees, the certified mail's six fifty?
Yeah.
And that's this year, and you're going to charge ten, so, a year from now, we'll probably, once again, in a situation where we're going to lose money, I mean, I would imagine.
I wouldn't say a year from now, but within two, three years, you're going to have to look at, you know.
A little more regularly than we have been.
Yeah, yeah.
A lot more regularly.
But I think, I think two fifty is reasonable for the notification fee, for the public management.
And maybe you can find out from your zone, who does this.
I, I don't know, I'm going to bring it back to the board.
It should be just consistent fee, a consistent fee to address the board.
I agree, I understand why there would have been, but I guess I'm not allowed to.
Well, because I, I mean, the newspaper notices have been creeping, I mean, there's fewer and fewer of them, so.
That, I understand, that part I understand, if the newspaper, but it's crazy.
I don't know how the certified mail got so expensive, I don't know, but you can't, you can't.
We certainly caught on in the last two years when we got sent a certified mail.
And rates going up in January, getting a conservative stamp, so I assume.
Yeah, most of the day, so.
Well, that will certainly add to. Well, that will certainly add to, right, I mean, you guys send a regular postage. And the other-
Twelve bucks a person.
Oh, yeah.
No more, I would be able to.
Well, the thing with zoning, too, is that, you know, you change it so that the secretary thinks hourly, so it's not a flat fee, so you're gonna, the zoning's gonna end up paying a lot more for their courting secretary.
Next year, yeah, we're gonna go that into the, into the budget. This year, we should be, we should be safer with what we have budgeted.
Yes, but now, so now that it's hourly, you should, you know, the fee should, should cover that.
Oh, they were, yeah, 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 yeah.
I, I would say we should make it uniform with, with, with the planning.
Let's, let's start swinging it back. Zoning is, that's your, that's your problem. Always there for you, man.
Anything else that we can think of, that we wanna address, anything that we wanna deal with? Are we all set with, with changes for projects, mixed-use projects? Wasn't there something else we needed to address, specific to, to the blue-in project?
Well, that's the reason why I sent, there, there seems to be a little bit of confusion if he's saying to the zoning board-
It was, it was, units, right?
Yeah.
Residential units.
Yeah, so, until I hear back from him, you know, if, if he said to the zoning board in public, that, yeah, we're gonna keep it as office space, or something like that, and then, and then in a side discussion with you and I, he says, well, you know, I kinda would like to put residential in there.
I think he probably would, but I think it's, I mean, he hasn't said this, this is just conjecture on my part, but it has to be, and he can't drive it, right?
Yeah.
He can't, he's not gonna go fill that place with the number of rental units. I'm assuming that would make it very profitable, or we would want to see larger, lesser and larger units.
Which property type was that?
The old Blue-in factory.
Well, that's, that's the reason why, I kind of, the, the way I worded the email, it said, if there's any zoning changes you're looking for, you know, I recommend that you come to this meeting.
So to be, to be fair, and I don't, I've been so out of the loop this, I don't know what's going on, but, you know, we did drag the Cutter family through a brutal process.
For life's safety.
But it was also to find out what's going on where, in that building, in those buildings. Does that, does any of that logic apply to the Blue-in mill?
Not at the current time.
Okay, so he's not subdivided, he's not breaking-
He's not opposing any use.
He's not opposing anything.
Opposing any use, and I've heard whisperings of mixed residential-
It was manufacturing warehouse, warehousing, that's what it was.
Manufacturing.
And warehousing, right?
And warehouses.
Those are the two uses.
For the in-house manufacturer, as I understood. It was just warehousing for the roll-in machinery. But, you know, as far as, you know, trucking, I mean-
Well, the whole idea, I think, with, you know, with, with the other mills, was that if there was a fire, the police chief or the fire chief wanted to know what was going on where, in the building.
Right, of course, yeah. That makes a lot of sense. I'm just thinking proactively, there isn't, regardless of what he may have planned for his person, for that property, we may want to see, we may have a different vision.
True.
And I'm not trying to tie anyone's hands, and what they can, you know, they have an apartment in the forward, but I would much rather see high-end apartments going in there, or condos, versus tiny little one-bedroom apartments, I mean, so.
But he hasn't made-
But he hasn't made any-
Yeah, but, but can we, can we regulate to that level?
I don't know, I don't think we can.
Yeah, it's come, it's really gone. It's, it's been, it's been going on for a while.
Swept away.
It's been going on.
Be careful where you stand in the building, too, you don't get wet, so.
Yeah, yeah. See, I don't think he can, I, I don't think he can sit down and say, and John, correct me, if that VR ordinance said, you know, a unit needs to be square feet, or its number of bedrooms, can he?
Uh, you could, no, you could say, you could, you could limit it to square footage, but what are you gonna say?
I would anticipate that any proposal that comes that way, has already been a proposal that he's compared to our regulations, to see what fits. I think that whatever proposal he makes, and yes, it does have to, it does have to keep the lights on, it has to pay the bills.
Right, yeah, of course.
You know, but I, I think that, where he hasn't committed anything yet, he's made a serious investment in the building, he's not walked away, he's gonna make something happen.
You know, and I, I-
So we just kinda sit back and see what happens.
There's really good examples of, of, you know, of high-end luxury apartments that are small, you know, if you look at the, the old Nike plant in downtown Exeter, there's a lot of one-bedroom units in those, there's a lot of two- or three-bed, those are nice, I mean, they're very nice. Uh, you know, Chinburg's mill over in Summersworth, those are a mix of, I think, of one, two, and three-bedroom units, pretty nice, I mean, uh, they're very, actually, they're very nice.
I know the ones they have in Newmarket are really nice, too.
Yeah, yeah, so, you know, if he ever did any coop residential conversion, one would assume that he would, he would build wherever the market, I don't know, was willing to support.
I know, he, brief conversations I've had with him, had envisioned a restaurant eventually down there, and residential up there, that's what he really wanted.
I did get heard that, yeah. I wish him, I wish him luck.
Oh, me too.
I wish him luck.
I wanted to say, it was beautiful. But I guess I'm looking to, you know, how can we help it come along?
Yeah, 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 I do, I wanna see that happen, too, so.
Um, I want us out of here by eight-thirty, so, is there anything else that we-
Have we mentioned an additional workshop in December?
In December, just kind of, probably, probably to have, yeah.
December twenty-fifth?
Well, it's perfect, we should have it worked, but it could be-
Twenty-fourth is much better, I'd say.
Um, as late as you want, it's gonna be December, putting toys together all night.
It'll be the Tuesday after the first Tuesday, it'll be the second Tuesday.
No, I, we're meeting December sixth, so two weeks after that, that's the twentieth.
Are we meeting December sixth?
December sixth, yeah.
Or what? The twentieth of December.
Regular meeting?
Regular meeting.
Well, do we, if, if, I mean, I don't know what's gonna happen with the application that we have, continuing, but there's a possibility you could also, it might be worth reaching before we, you know, for something, you know, schedule a meeting, it might be worth reaching out to Chris Berry to say, where do we stand? I, 'cause I don't, I had nothing else I was gonna do.
The what?
Twentieth, the only day that we've been on anything scheduled.
Really?
See?
So I have a question, who is, who's, who's alternate members now?
I was thinking the same, I mean, what do we have, full, the full members are you and me, John, Miles, and-
Patrick Alley.
No, 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 wait a minute, as, and you, as the executive, that's our five members. And, okay, our current alternates are Glenn Chase.
He's still an alternate?
He's still an alternate, and Patrick Alley.
He's the guy that bought Conus's house? He's the guy that works for Chimbro?
Yes, yeah.
Who, Chimbro?
Patrick Alley, the historic, uh-
Well, he's close with them.
Relatively new at Chimbro.
Yeah.
He used to be a historic, you know, but he's had enough, so, I don't think. Nice guy. Don't look at him, he's only been on for a couple of years.
But I had a discussion with him, and I think it was kind of, you know, it's like, well, what's our purpose, and it's like, well, we review applications, and it's like, well, I wish tonight you would have come, because you would have seen like, some actual planning, you know, occur, because really, our meetings were really reviewing compliance with the ordinance and stuff, so.
He's new to town, he wants to be involved, I mean.
A lot of our applications are multiple months meetings.
Yeah, well, for, for Rollinsford, multiple months meetings.
And he's an, he's an alternate?
Yes, yes.
I, I, I think that if, I, I don't know, I'm embarrassed to hear a man, but, and who's the other guy, Miles, is he an alternate or member?
Full member.
Yeah, it'd be good for, I don't think Glenn needs to be here every meeting, but it'd be good for the, the alternates, the meeting experience to be here every meeting, only because, you know, I've seen this happen, all of a sudden, happens through an application, Kevin realizes he got, you know, a conflict, or he, you know, something happens and he has to leave, and you need someone to step in.
Yeah.
Glenn could step in, 'cause he's done this before, but, you know, the new guys, I think they should probably be here, so, okay.
Short of where-
As far as that, Miles isn't here tonight, actually. I think he's been, I don't know.
I don't know.
He has to be appointed, right?
Yeah, yeah. I think I got him, got him on the email, because I remember our email getting kind of screwed up, that, yeah, so.
Did I get it through to you?
It's been discussed. That's, that's what I expected.